Good evening. Can everybody hear okay? Everybody can hear good? Our apologies for being a few minutes late, but we're so happy to see this many people and students here this evening. And we're very proud, very proud to recognize our kids. The meet and discuss board meeting of the Ambridge Area School District is held on Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. This meeting is being held to take action that has come before the board. All meetings have been advertised to permit legislative action as necessary. Please rise for the flag salute. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Here.
Mr. Campalong?
Here.
Mrs. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Keigho?
Here.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yeah.
Mr. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Pedego?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
All present.
Can I have the sunshine law, please?
The Board of School Directors held an executive session on Wednesday, May 12th, to discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws, and litigation or threatened litigation matters.
Thank you, June. We have no amendments to the agenda this evening. Moving forward to recognition and presentation. On behalf of the district and the Board of School Directors and Administration, we would like to thank our nurses in the district and our teachers, acknowledging them for their hard work and dedication this past year with COVID especially. We could not do all we have done with getting the children back in school and having the teachers working so hard and diligently as they have. If we could get a round of applause from them and thanking them for participating. Mrs. Keigho will recognize the following students. What we're going to do is ask you to come forward with your group. We'll read your names. And Mrs. Heim is going to get a picture of you. And I just have to say, I'm sure the rest of the board feels the same way, but I'm so impressed to see so many parents and students here this evening. You kids are our greatest asset and we should acknowledge you more and more and more, and that is going to happen. We have a newsletter coming out, a bulletin with kids being acknowledged. We're going to do another one in the fall and continue to do that in the spring. So, we appreciate you, we thank you, and we're so very proud that you're Bridgers. Mrs. Keigho?
Okay, we have our National Technology Honor Society. Brandon Hare, 12th grade, inductee, carpentry. Health occupations, Students of America, which is known as HOSA State. Emma Preston, 11th grade, second place. Her event was interviewing skills. Future Business Leaders of America scholarships to Pittsburgh Technical College. Ben Ware, 12th grade, $6,000. Troy Jacob, 12th grade, $6,000. Future Business Leaders of America Regional Leadership Conference. Troy Jacob, 12th grade, first place. Richard Nordy, 12th grade, fourth place. Benjamin Ware, 12th grade, fourth place. Challenge Program Business Information Systems, Semester One. Alexa Zoper, 11th grade, attendance. Benjamin Ware, 12th grade, academic excellence. The Beaver County Career and Technology Center February Student of the Month. Devon Pollock, 12th grade, vet assistant. Zaire Ellis, 12th grade, masonry. And Zaire, I just want you to know, I was in the classroom last week. The bridge with the CTC on one side and the date on the other, it was fantastic.
Hold on, kids. Let's give these kids a round of applause. Congratulations. Okay, moving forward, I will recognize the following students. Graduation for military students. Logan Hoover. Autumn Brickner. Chad Fitlin. Chad has already left to complete service. Autumn, when are you leaving, honey? Autumn is leaving June 8th. And Logan?
June 7th.
June 7th.
Mrs. Fisher, can we also have the current XO come up and just take a picture?
Absolutely.
Real quick, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
Mrs. Heim, can you give them a name? Autumn and Logan, we wish you much luck and success. Be safe, we're so very proud of you. Thanks for serving our country. Participation in Pennsylvania Music Educators Association District Five Honors Chorus, Region One Chorus, and PMEA State Chorus. John Barnhart, 12th grade. Noah White, 12th grade. They were chosen by audition to perform in PMEA State Chorus. Congratulations, kids. Participation in Pennsylvania Music Association District Five Chorus. Leah Fritsch, 11th grade, was chosen by audition to perform in PMEA State Chorus. Leah could not attend this evening. Congratulations to Leah. Mancini Awards nominations. Jaden Persa, 11th grade, Best Actress. Jaden was also not able to attend this evening. Ryan Kukonko, 12th grade, Best Actor. Congratulations to both Ryan and Jaden. Additionally, Zoe Setzenfan, Heidi Setzenfan, Lily McNary, Elizabeth Apucci, and Leah Fritsch will present a scene from our musical at the Mancini Virtual Awards. Are any attendance this evening? No? Okay, we congratulate them this evening. 2021 Pennsylvania TSA State Competition. Joy Jun, 11th grade, Top 10 Future Tech Teacher. Kyla Fitzgibbons, 12th grade, Outstanding Technology Student Scholarship Award. And she was unable to attend, she had to work this evening. Congratulations. Society for Analytical Chemists of Pittsburgh, 2021 Middle School Essay Contest. Benjamin Francis, first place. Veda Miller, Honorable Mention. I'd like to congratulate Ben. Ben, you got so tall, I haven't seen him for a year. Goodness, almost didn't recognize you, buddy. Congratulations, babe, I'm proud of you. Beaver County Conservation District Envirothon. The Environerds Team, 8th grader, second place. Lauren Mealy. Lauren was unable to attend this evening. Sheridan Olenek. Scarlett Truskowski. Madison Coza. And Allison Baker. Solo in the picture tonight, Allison. Congratulations, Allison. The Enviromaniacs Team, 8th graders, fifth place. Josh Cooney. Aiden Groom. Dean Chalupia. Owen Buchanan. A.J. Gerace. Congratulations, Allison. Solo, solo man in the picture. Congratulations. Okay, moving forward, Mr. Campalong will recognize the following athletes.
Wrestling, second place, 3A section, Tyler Holman. Congratulations, Tyler. Track and field, MAC Championships. Mara Devine, 12th grade, sixth place, 1600 meter run. Leah Fritsch, 11th grade, fourth place javelin, sixth place pole vault. Bethany Notton, 12th grade, first place 100 meter hurdles, second place 300 meters. Valerie Young, 11th grade, fifth place javelin, sixth place shot put.
Congratulations, girls. Coach Misick, would you like to come forward and take a picture with the girls?
I apologize. I'm so used to speaking to her mother. It is Valeria Young.
Congratulations, Tyler. Before I move forward with, for Mr. Campalong with middle school track and field, we also had a team, the Envirogeeks, took fourth place. Team members were Cody Roper. Ryliss Girardi. Michaela Wolf. Hannah Laramore. And Thane Barton.
Middle school track and field. Addison Crease, 800 meters. Athena Bruno, 1600 meters, and shot put. Lily Denny, 100 meters. Long jump. Mara Ilco, high jump, discus. Adonis Misick, shot put, discus. Ethan Davis Gardner, 100 meters, 400 meters, high jump. Noah Toma, 1600, and long jump. Congratulations to all of our student athletes.
Before we move forward, I do see Mr. Ayers is here. Coach Misick, anybody else that, the kids that were honored this evening, we would like to acknowledge our teaching staff and our coach that's here this evening, and thank you for your hard work with our children. I know Dawn, I can verify, you know, I have an almost 21-year-old. Dawn's always written grants, tries to get as much as he can for the children. So Dawn, thank you for all your hard work. Felicia, thank you for your success this year. Congratulations. Moving forward to public comment regarding agenda items only. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, board members desiring to address questions or concerns may do so after the resident comments, questions, or at the conclusion of the committee reports. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District under old and new business at the end of the meeting. Is it the first one?
The mic's on. The mic is on, you could use that. My name's Melinda Arlov. Address is 2917 Conway Walros, Dayton. So on the agenda this evening is acceptance of retirement. Sorry, we take our teachers very seriously.
Okay.
So this is, I just found this out, so it still hits me. So on the agenda this evening is acceptance of retirement for five of our Economy Elementary teachers and our school nurse. Upon seeing the agenda, our parents are very concerned, and we would like to be reassured that we will indeed still have these classrooms covered for our 2021 and 2022 school year. In February during the height of COVID, the board voted and passed the end of one of our 5th grade classrooms. I'm sorry.
That's okay, take your time.
Starting next year, we will have two classrooms with a class size of 28 to 29 students as of today. I'm not sure what the enrollment was exactly in February, but the number today, which I verified, is 28 and 29 students. That is with the students coming back from cyber. I'm really not sure how this was decided when no one could even come into our school and physically see the 21 to 25 students in 5th grade that we have right now. We're tight. 5th grade bodies take up a lot more room than these little 1st graders. The desks are spaced out as much as they can be, and still not allowing much walking room between them because of the kid size. They're big kids, they're bigger than me. I'm thinking that even could be a code, fire code violation, not getting to the front, to the back of the room in time. This morning, while parents were reading through the agenda, someone mentioned the deletion of the 5th grade class. And it wasn't good. I'm the PTA president, I got calls since 8:30 this morning about this, about everybody being concerned. I myself was not aware of it. Parents are beyond worried about the education our students will have, the learning environment, and the burnout of our staff. And as you can see from our teachers retiring, they're burning out. It's not fair to them. It's not fair to our students that lose these teachers that we're losing. I've had multiple families already telling me that they will switch in a full-time PA cyber, leaving Ambridge paying the bill. If I myself decided that, I would be taking five kids out of the Ambridge School District. Many of the Economy families, many of the Economy Elementary families are big families. We would like you to reconsider and bring the issue with Economy Elementary 5th grade classroom to the table once again. This year with so many changes and so many setbacks, now is not the time to take this classroom away. And not to mention, all the classes preceding this upcoming 5th grade are large classes. 70 at least per grade, so that's 35 students per 5th grade class. So once again, we as the parents at Economy Elementary, I have a lot of parents behind me as well that I'm not sure if they're going to speak or not, but we would like to bring this back to the table and be discussed as a whole because it's such great concern. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Patton, 3261 Richard Extension Freedom. I just wanted to, first of all, let me thank you all for volunteering your time to be on the board. It's not something that I am able to commit to. Thanks, Melinda. Which is why I was unaware that a 5th grade teacher position was going to be eliminated from Economy. I haven't been checking in to see what has been coming up on the agenda. With that being said, shame on me as a parent. I'm assuming that our students' welfare is the top priority. It doesn't always seem like that is the case. However, that is why I'm here now. Most of my son's classmates' parents were not able to come at such a last minute, but I had a free moment to do so. I am here in response to the board's decision to reduce the number of 5th grade teachers for the 21, 22 school year at Economy Elementary. I think it is an injustice to these kids to have you cram them into a classroom of 28 students. I have a question for you. Have you actually been in our classrooms to see how small they are? There are classes currently that have 25 kids in them with barely enough stuff in the rooms for the teachers to enrich our children with, and you can barely walk from the back to the front of the room. What is the plan when more students enroll during the school year? Is it to squeeze more kids into these two rooms? Redistrict them to State Street like has happened in the past from Highland? Or is the plan to hire a new unseasoned teacher and then pick and choose which students to put into his or her room? You are going to put a 3rd grade teacher back in rotation during the 22, 23 school year, so why not keep all three of them there and not create more disruption for these students? What if the 5th grade teachers bid into one of the retired teachers' placements in one of the lower grades? If you remember, the last year, we were living in a pandemic. We all are working our way out of this pandemic, but this group has lost the last 12 weeks of 3rd grade. That was 12 weeks of instructions that they missed. Yes, the teachers did the best that they could despite being thrown at home and rushing to copy things for what they thought was a two-week timeframe just so the kids had stuff to work on. And then the two weeks turned into 12 weeks. They lost a lot of learning during that timeframe. I can tell you as a parent, my son was learning his times tables during that timeframe. And there's a lot of students where their parents did not work with them on their times tables, and they're struggling still. And then, let's just look at this past school year. We spent four months only coming to school two days a week and trying to learn from home the other three days. I forgot about the other shutdown where we were remote for two full months. I know it's not the board's fault, it's the pandemic, but we have to keep this in mind. The teachers and the students managed to the best of their ability. I know there is more that they could have learned had they been in all five days. Have you asked the students that are current 4th graders what their opinions are about being in a much larger class? Are they going to be okay? Are they going to feel like they're going to be able to get the instruction they need? Have you considered the disruption of the classes that occur when another student is having an issue and there's loss of instruction there? When my daughter attended Economy for her 4th grade year, it was a completely different story. I couldn't believe the responsibility that they needed to have. They had so much more work. And I'm not saying that the teachers aren't doing what they're supposed to. There's only so much you can do when the technology isn't working to the full capacity. When students are submitting assignments online, you look back in Tyler and they're missing assignments that the student had. The student goes back into notability to find the assignment to resubmit it, and it's completely gone where the information is gone, and they have to redo the information, resubmit it, have it not go through again, go back in and resubmit the information and redo the information again. This has happened multiple times. We cannot compare the numbers between the students in 5th grade classrooms to the kindergarten classrooms. As Melinda said, they're a lot bigger. Plus, the kindergarten classrooms at Economy Elementary are so much bigger than the classrooms for 1st grade to 5th grade. These kids are packed in there, and you just really need to go in there and look. I've been in these classrooms, there's 25 desks in there. It is packed. I also want to remind the current school board about the previous school board trying to do the same thing a few years back. The board cut a 5th grade teacher at Economy due to the numbers and also to save money. And then, at the beginning of the school year, they had to scramble to get a teacher to fill the third position because they were way over the numbers in the classroom. Why do you want to repeat the same thing? I don't think it's worth it. Would it not make more sense to keep all three 5th grade teachers at Economy for the next school year to give these students a chance to learn with decent-sized classrooms?
Lisa, we're at five minutes.
I'm almost done. Okay. They will be going to the middle school the following year and failed by our district. Are we not tired of hearing about the failures of our district? Wouldn't we want to hear how the district took into account their students and how we can help them to succeed? Are you not tired of sending money to the cyber schools and the charter schools? Issues like this are what keep people to start looking at other options. You keep saying, "Let's get everybody who goes to cyber and charter schools to come back. Let's do it." Make it so you want them to come back. Don't make it so they want to find another option. Don't we have enough teachers that are retiring this year so we... Don't we have enough teachers that are retiring this year so we don't have to eliminate a position? Please keep, please consider keeping the third, fifth grade teacher. Thank you.
That's okay. I would just like to publicly state, I, I know both of these ladies, both have tirelessly worked with the, the PTO. Lisa is, is still an employee here. I've had her help me on several, several PTO activities. Melinda is, is very, very active and does a lot for the children in the community. Your concerns do not fall on deaf ears. We, we've had several discussions, and we will continue to have those discussions. But we appreciate you and we hear your concerns, and we thank you for speaking tonight. Anybody else has anything else to say before we move forward? Moving forward to personnel, Mr. Angus?
Yes, this evening we have six items on the agenda, and I would move to be as option of items one through six as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Metz. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettigo?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Superintendent, report.
Just again, want to reiterate, as, as you said, Mrs. Fisher, thankful to our teachers, our nurses, and our entire staff this week in particular. Appreciate all the hard work. Thanks to all the parents and students who came out. And thank you for the board for recognizing them and their coaches and their teachers. Very, very proud. Excellent day to celebrate all of their success. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move forward to the solicitors' report, Mrs. Heim, do we have copies somewhere of the bulletin? It's posted on the website. We don't have any hard copies here this evening. Okay. All right. Mrs. Heim, first of all, I would like to thank her this evening. We have put together a, a spring Bridger, Bridger bulletin that she's worked very hard at compiling for us. There is some very detailed, important information in there highlighting our students and our district. A little, a little article on the budget. Good information in here, and I hope you will go on the, on the district website and take a look at the bulletin. Thank you, Mrs. Heim, and I know she had assistance as well from some of her staff. We'd like to thank the employees that submitted articles and had given us the information for her to compile. So please go on the website and check the bulletin out. Moving forward to the solicitors' report.
I have no action items this evening for the board.
Thank you, Ms. Turnbull. I have a motion to adjourn the voting meeting. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Kehoe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving forward to the meet and discuss board meeting. The meet and discuss board meeting of the Ambergeria School District is held on Wednesday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting is being held to review the agenda for the regular monthly board meeting that will be held on Wednesday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one at seven P M. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Here.
Mr. Campalong?
Here.
Mrs. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Here.
Mrs. Manganello?
Here.
Mr. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Pettigo?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence this evening, Jim?
No correspondence.
Thank you. We've already completed student-teacher recognitions. No presentations. Public comment regarding agenda items only. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, board members desiring to address questions or concerns may do so after the residents' comments, questions, or at the conclusion of the committee reports. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Ambergeria School District under old and new business at the end of the meeting. Okay, moving forward to the committee reports. Education and Technology, Mrs. Manganello?
Thank you, Mrs. President. Tonight I have four items for discussion. The Slippery Rock University affiliation agreement with the Department of Nursing, a student discipline, a settlement agreement, and flexible instruction days.
Can you speak up, Mrs. Manganello?
Can you, can you hear me now? You want me to repeat?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I have four items for discussion. The Slippery Rock University affiliation agreement with the Department of Nursing, the student discipline, the settlement agreement, and the flexible instructional days. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Finance and Budget, Ms. Pettigo?
Thank you, Mrs. President. For the call to order, should that be, should that read Wednesday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one?
Can you speak up a little, Ms. Pettigo? I'm sorry.
Oh, you can't hear me?
No.
Okay. Just the, the change on the call to order, the date is incorrect. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under Finance and Budget, we have eight items to discuss this evening. Items number one and two pertain to the regular monthly bills and salaries for the school district and the cafeteria. Is there any discussion? Item number three, Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash eight. It's recommended to approve the resolution to authorize signers on the district P N C bank account. Any discussion? Pennsylvania School Board Association, P S B A, it's recommended to approve the renewal dues for the P S B A All-Access Package for a total cost of two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, which reflects no increase. Any discussion? Number five is rescind. It's recommended to rescind the board action taken on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty, board meeting, item five C under Finance and Budget, approving sale of repository property. Item number six, Student Athletic Insurance. Part A, it's recommended that the United States Fire Insurance Company, P S B A endorsed, be approved for voluntary student insurance coverage for the twenty-one, twenty-two school term beginning August first, two thousand twenty-one. Goodwin and Gruber Agency will act as the insurance broker. The medical limits are two hundred and fifty thousand with a one-year period. The rate for school time coverage is twenty-two fifty and ninety dollars for twenty-four hour coverage. Part B, it's recommended that the United States Fire Insurance Company be approved for student athletic coverage at a cost of ten thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars to ensure interscholastic athletes, band, and cheerleaders to insure them. The medical limit for sports is a million dollars with a two-year benefit period. Plan one, which pays all medical expenses usual and customary, will be used. The premium includes a field trip endorsement for all one-day field trips in, within Pennsylvania for coverage up to twenty-five hundred per student. This is no increase to the current cost. Item number seven, Technology Support Agreement. It's recommended to approve a three-year agreement with Communications Consulting. Be approved as presented. The performance period will run from July two thousand twenty-one through June two thousand twenty-four for the total cost of two hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred at no additional cost to the district. This includes full-time, five days per week, subject to solicitor review. And item number eight, Ambulance Service. It's recommended to approve an agreement between A A S D and the nonprofit emergency services of Beaver County. Medic rescue for a period of one year commencing on July first, two thousand twenty-one, and an annual fee of three thousand four hundred, which reflects no increase. Any discussion for any of the items? Okay, that is all I have, Mrs. President.
Thank you, Ms. Pettigo. Building and Grounds, Mr. Angus?
There are no items for discussion this evening.
Thank you. Athletics, Mr. Campalong?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Public Relations, Mr. Metz?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Steering and Rules, Mrs. Kehoe?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number one is Policy one three seven point one, extracurricular participation by home education students. It is a third reading. It's to approve participation in the district's extracurricular activities and interscholastic athletic programs by student enrolled in a home education program who meets all the conditions stated in Board Policies one twenty-two, one twenty-three, and one thirty-seven. Are there any questions? Item number two is Policy one five zero, Title One, comparability of services. It is a third reading. It is to direct each district's school building receiving Title One's funds to use state and local funds to provide services that, taken as a whole, are at least comparable to services in those schools in the district that do not receive Title One funds. Are there any questions? Item number three is Policy three four zero, Responsibility for Student Welfare, a third reading. It is to ensure the appropriate oversight of and responsibility for student welfare by administrative professional and support employees. Are there any questions? Item number four, Policy seven zero seven, Use of Facilities, a third reading. It is to revise School Board Policy seven oh seven. It is to make school facilities available to individuals and community groups without discrimination and in accordance with this policy, provided the use does not interfere with the education program of the schools. This policy establishes conditions, restrictions, and procedures for the use of school facilities for non-school-sponsored purposes. Are there any questions? Item number five is Policy eight one zero point one, School Bus Drivers and School Commercial Motor Vehicle Drivers. It is a third reading. It is to recognize that an employee must be fit to operate a school bus and commercial motor vehicle to ensure the health and safety of students being transported. Are there any questions? Item number six is Policy eight one zero point three, School Vehicle Drivers, third reading. It is to recognize that an employee must be fit to operate a school vehicle to ensure the health and safety of students being transported. Are there any questions? Item number seven is Policy eight three two, Educational Equity. It is a third reading. It is to prioritize the principle of educational equity through the fair and just allocation of resources, opportunities, and treatment of students based upon each individual student's needs. Any questions? Item number eight, Policy two four six, School Wellness. It is a first reading. It is to recognize that student wellness and proper nutrition are related to students' physical well-being, growth, development, and readiness to learn. Are there any questions? That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kehoe. Moving forward to Legislative, Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Board of School Directors of the Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit mail ballot. Only one for legislative. It is recommended that two thousand twenty-one mail ballot be cast for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Board of School Directors of the Beaver Valley Intermediate Union. The term of the school, Board of School Directors of the B V I U elected by this ballot shall be for the three years beginning July one, two thousand twenty-one, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as provided in the school code. Any questions? Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Salary, Schedule, and Labor Relations, Mrs. Curtis?
Nothing to discuss this evening.
Thank you. Remember the sunshine law?
Board of School Directors held an executive session on Wednesday, May twelfth to discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws in litigation or threatened litigation matters.
Thank you, Mrs. Manganello. Motion to adjourn the meeting and return to executive session for personnel matters and matters subject to attorney-client privilege. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Angus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for attending this evening.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.